It is six o'clock. I will call the May tenth, two thousand and twenty-two meeting of the West County Board of Supervisors to order. This evening, we have Pastor Jim Cox, the retired pastor from the Seventh Day Adventist Church, to provide our invocation. If you would please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Before I pray, let me just say a word about the National Day of Prayer service last Thursday night. Thank you to the Board of Supervisors and to those who attended and to the proclamation, which was outstanding. And our supervisor read it absolutely perfectly, and we were grateful for that. We didn't have the crowd that we had hoped for, but we had more than we had expected. And by now, almost two thousand people have viewed it on the website of the Withfield Police Department, so we're thankful for that, and we're sure that number will grow. So again, thank you, and thank you for the privilege in coming to pray for you. Our Father and our holy God, we praise you, Father, for the many blessings that you pour upon us every day. And now, as these leaders of our community endeavor to enter into this supervisors' meeting to plan and carry out the business of our community, we ask that you would bless each one, bless the families that are represented, give them wisdom, Father, beyond compare for everything that is done here tonight, done for your honor and your glory. For we pray it in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, equal and just.
Yes, sir.
Can you mute your phone unless you're speaking? We're getting a lot of feedback.
Yes, sir. Mute now.
All right. We do have a core, and Mr. Terry has requested to join the meeting by phone because he's out of town. Per our rules of procedure, unless there's an objection, permission will automatically be granted. First item on the agenda is Citizens Time. As always, I'll call you up. You have three minutes to speak. If you would state your name and address for the record. And the first person we have signed up is Ms. Diane Ennis.
Diane Ennis, excuse me. Diane Ennis, twelve, twelve sixteen, ten fifteen Connors Valley Road, Max Meadows. I have a paper here. I was gonna read it, but I'm not gonna do it. The language in these items is beyond belief for our children. I think you've seen them before. And I just wanted to encourage you all to remember the future. If this stuff doesn't get stopped, who knows what will be coming next? The title of this resolution is "Objecting to Pornography in West County Schools." And as I said, you can read it. I hope that you all understand what's written in here, and we would recommend that this resolution be put on the agenda for the next meeting, May twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-two. We need to get a vote from you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ennis. The next person signed up is Mr. Jim Ennis.
Jim Ennis, living at the same place, ten fifteen Connors Valley Road. I wanted to make a few comments about, I got to read this residential anti-displacement and reconciliation assistance plan. And I got to reading it, and I go, oh, my goodness. Wow. All occupied and vacant properties that were basically Section Eight housing are going to be rebuilt, redone, restored to make more and better upgrade housing for Section Eight people. And I go, who the heck is that for, you know? My goodness. I'm sure all of you are aware, over the past year and a half, we've had open borders. Tens of thousands of people have crossed into the country. We have Afghans coming into the country. We have Taliban coming into the country, and these people need a place to stay. So we are, I'm concerned about our little county out here, our rural county, is a great place where they would love to send more and more of these people to occupy and live in our neighborhoods. So I don't know what you all can do about this resolution thing about the federal agency wanting to upgrade and increase, you know, housing for all these Section Eight-type people. And we don't think we'd need or want that much going on in our county. But they need to find a place for all these people that are coming into the country, and I don't know if we want them all here. So I hope you can do something about it. I'm not sure what power or authority you have, but it's kind of alarming that, because I knew it was coming, because you keep hearing stories about open borders, open borders, people from all these foreign countries coming in here. So if you can do something about it, please do.
Thank you, Mr. Ennis. The next person we have signed up is Mr. Jerry Blevins. Mr. Blevins?
My name is Jerry Blevins, three seven seven nine Avenue Road. Recently, I received a two thousand and twenty-two tax reassessment form in the mail, and some of my tax reassessments go up by almost four hundred percent. Apparently, the reassessors had arrived at my lock gate and decided to estimate my reassessment rather than leaving a note in the mailbox or gate with their phone number on it so it could contact them. After further looking into the reassessment, I discovered that I'd only received a partial reassessment, leaving out the detailed parts which can be obtained through the Commission of Revenue Office of West County. By not mailing out a full reassessment, it makes it difficult on taxpayers. Not having an office to meet one-on-one with reassessors also makes it difficult for taxpayers. A fortnight ago, I came to you to give analysis of my experience with the West County Sheriff's Department, as well as problems obtained a copy of nine-one-one call made to the county call center on February fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. I'm only complaining to the Department of Social Service about problems with the neighbor, but the problems continue. And a major client called my attorney apparently to complain about speaking to the Board of Supervisors, Ms. Lawson. My attorney asked why I did this, and I applied that people have a right to know the truths, and since I'm apparently the only person who seems to know that, who better than I to relate it? Some of the problems I went through DS was continued, including messing with my chainsaw switch, running TV interference, turning off my SIM card on my smartphone, as well as causing my smartphone to jump from one app to another without input from me. I probably was messed with, and one was a very bad rash, which now infected. My computer printer changes the number of copies to be made without input from me. A little over a year ago, I went to Winterfell, North Carolina for a VA disability exam, and while there, I told my examiner about some of the cyber problems I was having, and I expected we had taken some of our cyber dollars on the road and messed around with some other countries, namely Cuba. And that's why embassy employees were attacked with what is now called embassy syndrome. My examiner said, yeah, I know that, and had once treated some of the patients while working in Washington Metro area. I then asked my examiner how I was going to tell the American public, to which she replied, you're not. Little did my examiner or I, at that time, realize my immortal friend would soon create a set of circumstances that would indeed make this possible. I worked closely with my mortal friend for about fifty years, and although at times it can be intimidating to have a friend that always has the best ideas, is never wrong. But the outcome is so nice and beautiful, one soon gains great respect for his knowledge and power. God blessed the Withfield the evening of March sixth, two thousand and twenty-two, and brought a lot of hail, wind, and tornado warning directly over the bowling mat. Just giving a clear warning that he can find Withfield, and he is displeased with what's going on there. I realize this statement is in the abstract, but the Father's statement will quickly remove the abstract by providing my name, his security number, birthday, and address to the Father's states, and our relationship with God in finite terms anyone can understand. I'm only sure Stephanie's taking me to the West County Community Hospital and chained me to the bed. The hospital did comprehensive testing, and bill Medicare a total of three thousand forty-six dollars, and Medicare approved the entire amount. However, Medicare only paid the hospital fifty-eight cents, and then notified me that I had fully met my two hundred and twenty-three dollars deductible for Part B for two thousand and twenty-two. Events such as this are not isolated events, but events that occur quite frequently. Since being released in jail, I've had two hearings in jail district court. They were very interesting, and involved my attorney.
All right, Mr. Blevins.
Excuse me?
That's your time, sir.
All right, so?
Your, that was your time, sir.
Okay, I've got a couple more sentences, but whatever.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
That's all we have signed up to speak during Citizens Time. I'll close Citizens Time. Our next item is a public hearing on the VDOT secondary six-year plan. Mr. Baird, do we need to read the public hearing notice?
We can. I'd be glad to if you'd like for me to.
Go ahead, sir.
The Virginia Department of Transportation, the Board of Supervisors of West County, in accordance with thirty-three point two, three thirty-one of the Code of Virginia, will conduct a joint public hearing in the boardroom of the West County Administration Building, three forty South Sixth Street, Withfield, Virginia, two four three eight two, at six p.m. on May tenth, two thousand and twenty-two. The purpose of this public hearing is to receive public comment on the proposed secondary six-year plan for fiscal years two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three through two thousand and twenty-seven, twenty-eight in West County, and on the secondary system construction budget for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three. Copies of the proposed plan and budget may be reviewed at the Withfield Residence, the office of the Virginia Department of Transportation, located at twenty-four, twenty-eight forty-three Chapman Road, Withfield, Virginia, and or at the office, West County offices located at three forty South Sixth Street, Withfield, Virginia, two four three eight two. All projects in the secondary six-year plan are eligible for funds will be included in the statewide transportation improvement program, which documents how Virginia will obligate federal transportation funds. Persons requiring special assistance to attend anticipated in this hearing should contact the Virginia Department of Transportation at two seven six, two two eight, twenty-one fifty-four. Persons wishing to speak to this public hearing should contact the West County Board of Supervisors at two two three, four five zero zero.
Thank you, Mr. Baird. We don't have anybody signed up to speak at the public hearing, so I'll close the public hearing or the public comment portion of the hearing. I know we've got a couple of people here that are interested.
Mr. Fowler?
Sir, Mr. Fowler?
Good evening.
Okay. In our last meeting, we discussed routes that we could add. We had one mile that we could add to the six-year plan, and we also discussed changing, rearranging the couple routes in the plan, one being Doe Run. And I guess, do you, you all have a copy of the updated? Did you get him a copy, Stephen?
The board package has the proposal, yes.
Okay. So in the proposal, we were moving Doe Run. Basically, we were swapping about a half a mile, point four or five miles of Doe Run with point five miles of Millers Creek Road. And in doing so, this would not impact any other route on the six-year plan. So as you'll see on the updated plan proposal, Doe Run has been moved. It's in front of Millers Creek Road. The one point five mile from Heather Lane to one point five miles north has been changed to one mile. And we took the half mile from Millers Creek Road and moved it into the position where Doe Run had been, and basically switched those two routes. So that's programmed in. We also took the allocations for this fiscal year, and due to inflation and rising cost, those costs also impact VDOT. It impacts our materials cost, our delivery cost for materials. So with that, we had to utilize the funding for this year's allocations to update the cost on all of the existing projects on the six-year plan in an effort to keep it a true six-year plan. And after the application of those allocations, we were able to add, and I'm going to the last two line items on the six-year plan, we were able to add another point nine miles of Connors Valley Road. And that will extend from the section we added last year. We added one point two miles last year. So from that one point two mile section, we added another nine tenths. And then we also utilized the last tenth of a mile to add a section of Foster Falls Road from the intersection of Hilli Haven Road, which is a private county road. From that intersection where Foster Falls pavement stops, we're extending point one miles of Foster Falls Road. And with that said, with no comment, if there's any comments, I'd be glad to open that up. Otherwise, I think we've moved toward a resolution to accept this.
Does anybody have any comments for Mr. Fowler about the addition?
No, I just appreciate you being accommodating on Doe Run, but then, of course, thank the rest of y'all for allowing the rest of Connors Valley, or another nine tenths on Connors Valley.
What, and I'm sure we had this discussion, but I can't, what's that leave on Connors Valley?
It leaves three tenths of a mile.
Yeah.
There was a remaining one point two miles left, and by adding this point nine, we still have three tenths.
So realistically, that's something we can address.
Yeah, we can add it next year, and by the time, actually, by the time it rolls around that we're doing the last, the nine tenths that we just added, if funding, and funding most likely will, if we next year add the remaining three tenths, we can catch it all at one time.
And I know, I mean, I know the residents down there appreciate it, but the road that Mr. Burnet formed to add Foster Falls and get that last house, I'm sure, those people be tickled.
Yeah, and we met with Ms. Mayberry.
Yes.
Or I had one of my staff meet with her last week, and the objective to have that section paved, obviously, is so that we can plow snow in the winter, you know, because basically, we have to plow primaries, then secondary, pave secondaries, then the gravel roads last. And so she's on that gravel road section, so she, she basically has to sit and watch the trucks turn around seven tenths of a mile, or a tenth of a mile away, seven hundred or so feet. And basically, we met with her because what we need, beyond the surface treatment up to her property, we also need a turnaround. Because the truck, if he plows up to her property, they would have to back out. And that's pretty, that's a longer distance, and we safely want our trucks backing out, especially at two a.m., three a.m., when they're plowing snow. So we're going to work with her. She directed us to her son, so I think the property is hers for life, and so she wants us to work with him. We haven't been able to get in contact with him yet, but we're, basically, we need to work out something to where we can create a turnaround for the truck so they can get back out after they plowed up to her property. But this is the first step, getting this section surface treated.
But I thank you.
Mm-hmm.
What is coming around, you all, and I apologize, I missed the air on this, and I didn't catch the air again just now, but what's in the board package stops at Riverview Road, and it does not include the, what I just handed out, which shows the Foster Falls Road and the Connors Valley Road. So I printed nine copies of the whole thing out to send to you, and it printed out the exact same thing as in the board package. The print area that we got from VDOT was set to stop there, and it didn't add the two roads, so that's why I went back out again. This is the adds the two roads that are on there. So basically, everything on your sheet is correct, just adds these two to that final plan they just didn't print out when it printed. So that shows the Foster Falls Road and the Connors Valley Road.
So do we just need to take action to approve the six-year plan?
Yes, sir, you do.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the secondary six-year plan as presented.
So moved.
How did I know it's coming from you? Have a motion by Mr. Smith. Do I have a second?
Second.
I can almost bet on that one, too. Is there any questions or discussions? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. We'll start with you, Mr. Horie.
Aye.
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 Thank you, Mr. Terry. So approved. Thank you, sir. And while you're standing there, I did not realize when I emailed you about the traffic light at the crossroads, that they were fine tuning it, but the next morning at seven o'clock, they were there, and I said, man, Andy's on the ball.
Yep. Trying to take care of it.
And then when you emailed me back, I said, okay, that explains it. I was like, man, that serves. But yeah, I think they've got the kinks worked out. It was, it was a little unfair for a while, but yeah, I was, I was really giving you, giving you props next morning about seven oh two.
Doing all I can to help you, right?
Yes.
I was ready for the roundabout there for about a week.
Oh, wow.
While I'm here, do you guys have any, anything you, any issues or concerns with VDOT?
Just one item. Would you send us any necessary resolutions for rural rustic that we need to adopt? Because I assume you need those by July first for this also, and I did not see that with this package, but I assume you'll need that as well.
Yes.
And while I'm thinking about, Andy, the Chief Deputy Klein has been working with the drug court program. You know, we've struggled with getting trustees from the jail. Some of the participants in the recovery corps have indicated they wouldn't mind picking up trash, and I assume they get the bags that you guys are coordinating.
Yes, and offline, I'll get his number from you.
Okay.
And, or I can, I'll just call your office, get the Chief Deputy Klein's number, and we'll coordinate.
I didn't, I didn't know y'all had somebody in your office to coordinate that, or if that went through you, or how that works.
Yeah, I do, so I can get, I can get them and Deputy Klein, Chief Deputy Klein, together and work it out.
Okay. Anybody else have anything? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you for everything.
Yep, thank you all.
Can I ask why you didn't have the snowplows ready for last Friday night any quicker?
I cannot believe that. The wind picked up, and it started raining, and the next thing you know, we had white on the ground.
I heard they had a couple of plows out on the interstate area.
Yeah. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda is payment of invoices. Each board member has received a copy of the invoices in their board package. I'll entertain a motion to approve the invoices.
Oh, moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Cook. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Ms. Lawson. Is there any questions, discussion, or any invoice that any board member wants to pull out? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote with Mr. Cook.
Aye.
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 Next item on the agenda is the minutes of our previous meeting from April the twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-two. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Oh, moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Cook. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Smith. Is there any corrections to the minutes as presented? Hearing none, all those who favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. So approved. Moving on to the agenda, to old business. First item under old business is appointments. Mr. Baird, do we have anybody?
Yeah, there's, and I appreciate Ms. Collins confirming these. We do have a vacancy on the Appalachian Regional Exposition Center authority. We have a name that's been mentioned, but I've not had a chance to talk to that individual about it in the process. Mount Rogers PDC, with Mr. Clifford retiring, we do have an additional vacancy there, and we still have a vacancy to fill, or a place to fill on the Withfield Community College Board.
Does any board member have any potential appointees?
No.
All right. Did we get any response? I know we put it out on social media, didn't we?
I did not hear of any response.
All right. Next item is the Blue Line Solutions contract. Is this Mr. Hankins?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This follows up on our previous discussions about speed cam reinforcement. We've been working out contract language with Blue Line Solutions out of Chattanooga. They're one of five firms that responded to our request for proposals. You have been sent a draft contract, and then yesterday evening, you were sent by email a final contract. Blue Line agreed to language yesterday afternoon. We had no further changes after meeting and discussing this morning, so staff recommends the most recent version that was emailed to you last night. Mr. Hogson is here from Blue Line Solutions to answer any technical questions that you may have, but at this point, staff believes that we've arrived at the appropriate agreement. This is a cooperative procurement, so other local governments will be able to attach to this agreement based on the same terms, and there are some other local governments that are waiting to see what we do so that they don't have to do that work. So you're welcome.
All right. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Hankins or Mr. Hogson? All right. I entertain a motion to approve the agreement, authorize the county administrator to execute the agreement for the county.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Smith. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Cook. Is there any questions or discussion? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote with Mr. Horie.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye abstain.
Aye abstain.
No.
Aye.
Aye.
So approved. Mr. Hogson, while you're here, I understand that Mr. Hutchinson has a family member who received some.
Pretty devastating news.
Yeah, pretty devastating health news, and just pass our thoughts and prayers along to him.
I'll make sure I'll talk him in on.
All right. Next item on the agenda is the ProCom agreement.
Been wearing out that law degree from Emory and Henry. The, Emory and Henry doesn't have a law school if anybody questions that.
Yeah.
Probably not ever. This agreement follows on a couple of months of discussion now that we've had with ProCom. They're one of two firms that proposed construction and physical upgrades to our public service radios. You had asked at your last meeting that we revise some language to try to ensure that we get the coverage that we expect. You've been sent both the, both of the responding proposals to be able to review. We have included language, the addition to, the agreement comes at the end of the first paragraph, and under the considerations. Signal coverage and system performance shall be generally consistent with engineering submitted in ProCom's response to West County's request for proposals, except for areas where improvements have been made to the original design. And that's the one tower that we're still trying to locate for Speedo, trying to get the right location in place for that, which could impact the cost of this agreement as well as we move forward. But ProCom has representatives here. We believe that we've worked out the language to the extent that we can. I'll be glad to answer any questions that you may have, or you can direct questions to ProCom's representatives. But staff recommends that you authorize the county administrator to enter into the agreement.
Does anybody have any questions about the agreement of the proposal?
This will be better than two cans of string, right?
Guaranteed.
I'm scared to actually say this, but it can't get any worse. But I have utmost faith that it'll be a marked improvement. I'll entertain a motion to approve the agreement, or authorize the county administrator to enter into the agreement.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Horie. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Smith. Excuse me. Is there any questions or discussion? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote with Mr. Cook.
Aye.
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 So approved, and thank you for your work on that, Mr. Hankins, and I appreciate you sending me the added language because my law degree from Bluefield, I read it three times, couldn't find it. All right. Do we have anything else under old business, Mr. Baird?
I am not aware of anything else. Jim?
I would mention, Mr. Chairman, the new Speedo truck is parked outside. If folks who are here have the opportunity to... If folks who are here have the opportunity to take a look, you're welcome to. Uh, we expect that we'll get that truck delivered down to them, uh, hopefully this week, depending on, I mean, we've got one last piece to put on it. License plate mounting bracket, so, um, I may need a ride back from somebody in Speedo, but I'll make those arrangements.
I can't believe Mr. Cancer is not here to see it, because he probably drove it back there.
I was gonna drive it home tonight.
And there is no hail damage, to the best that we can tell.
I didn't think about that. All right, moving on to new business. First item is our DHCD Lots Gap Tank Project.
Mr. Chairman, you have a stack of documents before you for consideration here. Um, as you are aware, we have applied and received two point five million dollars in funding from DHCD to build a tank on Lots Gap. Um, I will mention that we did secure the land last week. Uh, the company traded some land for us, to us, for exchange for the former well sites that we had on the, uh, over, on near ninety-four, unfortunate little area. And we appreciate their willingness to work with us and, and, and secure the sites. DHCD requires adoptions of these documents, um, uh, for, for us to, to have these agreements prepared for, to meet in the requirements of their funding. The first item, and I guess we'll take these one at a time, Mr. Chairman, and approve each one of us go through, and I'll answer the questions as best I can. First is the Business Employment Plan. It's basically identifying that we will advertise in the Whitfield Enterprise and that, uh, we will encourage the contractors to hire lower income persons residing in the county in the process.
So do we have to approve each one?
I would recommend approval of each one, yes, sir.
Entertained a motion to approve the Business and Employment Plan as presented.
So moved.
Have a motion by Ms. Lawson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Horni. Is there any questions or discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? So approved.
Next is a non-discrimination policy, just confirming that we will not be discriminating.
All right, entertain a motion to approve the non-discrimination policy as presented.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Horni. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Burnett. Is there any questions or discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? So approved.
The next item is a non-discrimination based on handicapped, and that includes that we will hold our meetings, uh, which will, will be held in, in this, this office here, in this, this room here, to meet all requirements. And that we also, within this, have a self-evaluation site accessibility checklist. And do a, our public notice of this as well. Recommend that you all approve the section five oh four nondiscrimination.
Entertained a motion to approve the section five oh four nondiscrimination policy.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Cook. Do I have a second by Mr. Smith? Is there any questions or discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? So approved.
Uh, the next is just the five oh four grievance procedure, that basically adopting the policy. And if there are any complaints about it, they should be directed to me if we are not in compliance with any of our five oh four requirements regarding handicap or any other issues.
All right, entertain a motion to approve the five oh four grievance procedure.
So moved.
Have a motion by Ms. Lawson. Do I have a second?
Thank you.
By Mr. Cook. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same side. So approved.
The next is a certification of signatures, uh, and this gets, uh, basically at the end of it, Mr. Vol. As chairman, uh, is confirming, uh, on your all's vote that I, as county administrator, and Regina Williams as finance director, uh, have the ability to act on your behalf and sign all documents.
All right, entertain a motion to approve the certification of signatures.
So moved.
Have a motion by Ms. Lawson. Have a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Smith. Is there any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? So moved.
Uh, next is the Residential Anti-Displacement and Relocation Assistance Plan. And since you, you brought up some questions about this, I'll just address them. Um, in the first sentence of this, you will see that With County will replace all occupied and vacant occupiable low to moderate income dwelling units demolished or converted to a use other than as a lower moderate income dwelling as a direct result of the activities assisted with the funds provided under DHCD. Uh, this project will consist of construction of a tank, water tank up on Lots Gap. Uh, an extension of the water line down Lots Gap Road. Uh, no homes or buildings are to be affected. The line will be traveling through some private property with easements. Uh, but there will not be anyone displaced or anyone to be relocated as a result of this.
All right, entertain a motion to approve the Residential Anti-Displacement and Relocation Assistance Plan.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Smith. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Horni. Is there any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? So approved.
And the last one is the Fair Housing Certification Resolution, uh, where we have accepted these funds. Uh, we are required to take action to affirm, to affirmatively further fair housing. Uh, and thereby we are agreeing to take, uh, action each year during the life of the project funded with these community development grant funds.
All right, entertain a motion to approve the Fair Housing Certification Resolution.
So moved.
Have a motion by Ms. Lawson. Have a second by Mr. Cook. Is there any questions or discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any, any opposed? So approved. Anything else under that, Mr. Baird?
No, I appreciate your all's assistance. I will let you know that we have, uh, two other applications in to assist us with this project. Uh, with the ARPA money that is out there. If we receive any additional funding for that, it's about a five point four million dollar total project here. Uh, if we receive any funding through that, I will be bringing back the notice of award and also any other uh, documents that we need to have approved to go with that. But thank you all for your assistance with this.
Thank you, sir. Next item is our Ready Mixed Road, um, Project Adjustment Resolution. Mr. Baird, you want to explain this one?
Yes, Ready Mixed Road, we did a revenue sharing project on it. That is off the road off of Exit seventy-seven that extends up to the Apex Center. Um, we worked on constructing that road to state maintained standards. Um, you all recently approved a plat for VDOT on this. Uh, we need to adopt this resolution, uh, and they will add this, that road into the Virginia State Road System. Technically, the secondary system of state highways.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve With County Resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero five.
So moved. Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Horni. Have a second by Mr. Smith. Is there any questions or discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? So approved. Next item is a proclamation for the With County Community Hospital. Mr. Baird is?
Uh, yes, sir. Um, the, uh, the hospital is celebrating fifty years. Um, did I know if you want to have this read publicly in the meeting? If you'd like to read it, I'd like to read it, if you all like to adopt it for presentation. Uh, but, uh, we are, we are very fortunate to have a hospital in our community. It's a very important asset to our community. It's an important asset in industrial recruitment and recruitment. And, uh, we're glad to, uh, to offer this proclamation, uh, to express appreciation for fifty years of service.
Does anybody have any questions on the proclamation? All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the proclamation recognizing WCCH.
So moved.
Have a motion by Ms. Lawson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Cook. Is there any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Anything else under new business?
Uh, there is one more item, sir. It's on your agenda, but it did not make, uh, the cover sheet of it. But item D, um, is the page one oh seven of your agenda. Uh, there's the Sheriff's Office sole source request. Uh, as you all know, they have ordered a tactical vehicle. This is some equipment that they can better explain than I to go with that tactical, uh, vehicle. Uh, they have indicated they have only one source provider that can provide the product, meeting their specifications. Um, and this is just a request that you approve the sheriff's request and authorize staff to post notice, which is required, uh, when you do a sole source provider.
Sheriff Foster, you?
Yeah, the product from TNVC that we requested the sole source pricing on, it contains a white phosphorus tube. And in essence, this corporation is the only manufacturer who can get, sell, or distribute that. It's a one of a kind. It's the only company that uses that type of technology, and that's why we went with these folks. Their product pretty much is guaranteed for a lifetime. It has a lifetime warranty. So it's probably the best product out there, and I've got some information on it I printed for you. If you'd like to have it on some sole sources, the pricing on everything, people like to do that.
So that explains a little bit more of the difference more about the product.
All right, does anybody have any questions for the sheriff? All right, entertain a motion to approve the request per the sheriff to authorize staff to post the notice.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Cook. Do I have a, I mean, Mr. Smith. Do I have a second?
I might as well say.
Have a second by Mr. Cook. I was really wondering which one was gonna throw something at me. Is there any questions or discussion? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote with Mr. Horni.
Aye.
Albstain.
Albstain.
Aye.
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 So approved. All right, anything else under old or new business, Mr. Baird?
Uh, that is all that I have. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Hankins, do you have anything?
I do not.
All right, move on to board reports. First board report is the Budget Committee, and I believe that is...
Oh. The Budget Committee met on May fourth, two thousand twenty-two and makes the, and makes the following recommendations. The treasurer to place five hundred thousand in a thirty day cer- uh, certificate of deposit that satisfies the DHCD's grant requirements for the Lots Gap, um, tank project.
All right, come from committee, it doesn't need a second. Is there any questions or discussion on that recommendation? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote with Mr. Cook.
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
So approved.
That's all, Mr. Chairman.
All right, move on to board supervisors' time. Mr. Terry, since you're joining remotely, we'll start with you.
I don't have anything to discuss. Hi, Mr. Chairman. Thank you guys for letting me participate remotely.
All right, thank you, sir. Mr. Cook?
I have nothing at this time.
Mr. Burnett?
I have nothing at this time.
Ms. Lawson?
Nothing at this time.
Mr.?
Second.
Smith?
I have nothing at this time.
Mr. Horni?
I'm being shocked.
You! How do you think that feels? Uh, I've just got one thing, and, and I've talked to Mr. Baird about it. Um, you know, for the past two weeks, um, I've been checking the recycling centers in my area, Old Apple House, the one in Murray Tree. Um, both of them have been almost at capacity on Saturday and Sunday. Mr. Baird, I've fought this battle for five years. I'm, I'm about sick of it. I mean, what, what do we need to do? This is a basic service, and I'm not gonna get up on my soapbox that, you know, we tell the citizens where to take their trash. They should not be having the sling of thirty pound bag of trash up in the open top. We've made improvements. We added compactors. I mean, what, what do we need to do? It, it's just, um, I would encourage other board members when you're out and about on the weekend to go by your recycle centers and, and just make sure that, uh, it's, you know, I said it several years ago, that it's not becoming any convenient centers doing the convenience. But, um, seems like once every couple of years I have to bring this up, but, you know, I, I can understand, you know, occasionally, good weather weekends, people clean their house. I understand that, but, you know, last weekend was not a good weather weekend. And Sunday, ten after one, they opened the one. Both compactors were either full or down, and that open top was ninety percent full. And there had to be trash on the ground somewhere, because you know, Mr. Baird, how much trash that thing takes in on a Sunday. If you'll get with Mr. Bowers and have him address it, and we'll just keep an eye on it.
I will do so, and, uh, I'll ask, um, Mr. Horni for, uh, next Tuesday, um, for us to include in the discussion, uh, the, uh, JPSA. Um, they do not have the ability to haul trash to the landfill in Tassau on Saturday because it is closed. Uh, the JPSA used to be open on Saturday, and that gave VNN somewhere to take full containers at that time. Uh, we'll, we'll talk to JPSA, what room they may be able to have to hold within trailers on Saturday. Uh, we may have to look at going back to them being open on Saturdays to try to provide somewhere to alleviate part of it. At the same time, um, you've gotta have the full containers, and if they, they have them clear Thursday and Friday, some of them, they don't have things to empty on Saturday morning, uh, at the center, so. But we'll, we'll certainly look at it and see if there's anything we can do to tend to alleviate it. Spring cleaning season does present challenges every year. Uh, we, we end up having centers that approach capacity or sometimes exceed capacity. Uh, we've been very fortunate over the last few years to, uh, a couple of years that we haven't had an issue. Um, and Royal Retreat this weekend did have a compactor that was out of service, so they were down to one compactor in, in the open tops. We will monitor it and see what we can do to make sure it's functioning well.
All right, thank you, sir. Um, we've got the budget revisions on our agendas, or?
Um, just, uh, this was the, the final, uh, the, the numbers that we have. Um, it shows, um, the, the vacancies, um, not the vacancies, the variance between our current revenue budget and our current expenditure budget. Uh, you all have agreed, uh, to, and set the public hearings for June fourteenth for our personal property tax rate. Um, we will need to approve a budget, um, approve a, an, uh, a budget for advertisement uh, no later than the May twenty-fourth meeting. Uh, didn't know what questions you all have, what additional details you want to go over, if you wanted to have a, uh, final work session, uh, next week before, uh, recommending a budget on the twenty, uh, twenty-fourth.
You know what state money is gonna be ready yet?
We don't. We, we are delaying it off as long as we can. Um, I do not have a timeframe. We heard mid-Mayish, but we don't know now that they're gonna have a budget in mid-Mayish, and I'm not gonna bet any money on it.
I've... I have not heard anything since they said mid-Mayish, and it's getting increasingly close to mid-Mayish. So, uh, I, I wonder if it's... So I wonder if it's not going to be a June 15th year.
I think it is, and we have no choice but to adopt a budget. And, I mean, a lot of locality's gone ahead in holding their public hearings and adopting and some have already, with the anticipation they're going to have to come back in July and do another public hearing and amend their budget for what the state is. So us holding our public hearing June 14th gives us the best opportunity. If they do anything in the next two weeks, we can change it and make that adoption at our May 24th meeting.
Does... What's everybody's pleasure? You want to have another work session and look at it, go through the finer points?
Do the hearing and then the work session after?
No, we need... Well, we need to...
I'd probably do the work session next week, give us a chance to put the final numbers in for the 24th for you all to recommend the advertising. And I think we're, I mean, I think we're pretty close. I mean, there's probably only a few minor changes that may be out there. The only reason can't do it the rest of this week is Mr. Hankins and I pretty much have events the rest of this week in the evenings. There's a fire committee meeting at 5 o'clock next Monday. We could do it at 6 o'clock after the fire committee meeting if they're definitely done by that time.
Will be done by then.
Or we could do it on Wednesday, the 18th.
Did you say Monday?
Monday, the 16th.
Well, I have other commitments on Monday.
Yeah, I have other commitment on Monday. What day did you say?
Monday, the 16th or Wednesday, the 18th. JPSA meets on Tuesday, the 17th.
But I'd rather not meet on Tuesday or Thursday, it's possible.
I'm trying to think.
Is it the 18th?
I think I have a District 3 meeting.
We did move that.
The 19th, so the 18th is what?
JSBA, we moved to the 24th.
Does anything like to work?
The 18th is Wednesday.
Wednesday? You said that works?
Yeah.
Okay.
What time y'all want to do it?
I'm flexible that way. Whatever works.
6.
That's fine, I mean, if you need to go earlier, I can make sure.
6 is moving in.
You'll go 5? Is earlier better for you?
5 is always better for me. Right, you'll be done with us then.
I ain't going to do this, what are you talking about? Just cuts into dinner, trying to get dinner first.
Y'all tell me, I'm...
Yeah, I'm good either way, y'all just let me know.
Root 6.
6, 5 o'clock. Put the difference just out there. Maybe it takes Mr. Cook longer than 30 minutes.
All right, so 6 o'clock, is that what you're saying, on the 18th?
All right, anything else, Mr. Bear?
I have no other additional items, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hankins, you have anything?
No, thank you, sir.
Ms. Collins, you have anything?
All's quiet in the legal front.
I almost said Mr. Horni, and I caught myself. All right, with nothing else to go before the board, I'll entertain a motion to recess until May 18th at 6 o'clock.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Smith, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Ms. Lawson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We'll be in recess.